Good morning and welcome to the Marcella Central School District Board of Education's special meeting for this morning, February 1st, 2021. This time I would ask people, please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the, uh... First, excuse me, item for this morning's meeting, approval of high-risk winter sports. Resolved that the Board of Education approves high-risk winter sports for Marcella schools for the 2020-21 season. May I have a motion?
Motion, Janine.
Janine?
Second, Christine.
Second, Christine. Questions or comments? Everyone should have received the, uh, both the, uh, document from the Onondahie County Health Department that came out late last week, as well as the Marcellus Athletic Department Plan for starting winter athletic season sports that Michelle sent out over the weekend.
Mike, just a, a couple of things. I know that this is a really tough position to be in. Um, you know, I sent a, I felt that I needed to send a message out last night communicating to the community because I know people are wondering, you know, where we're, where we sit with things, seeing as there are schools that are starting with practices today. And I know that it sort of leaves the board in a, in a tough spot, you know, as you're contemplating the risk and the reward, if you will. So, please understand, it's not my intention to put you there. I, I think you were put there by someone else. But nevertheless, you know, the decision rests on your plate. I can tell you that we've worked as quickly as we could with getting information so late to try to put something together. The final piece that I, I haven't put in any of the plans, and it's really because it's not completely up to me, is that we do intend to do testing weekly of athletes. I feel like, for me, that is a really important piece of making sure that we're doing everything we can to weed out, if you will, students that are either asymptomatic or, or getting ready to not be asymptomatic. And at least on a weekly basis, I think that will provide us with some protection. So I don't know if you have any other questions. I'm happy to answer them.
So, we, the weekly testing of athletes is not in the, uh, in the plan, but is going to be added to the plan?
Once I have... Once I have more details from the county, I'll enhance the plan with those details. They, they're providing the kits, the test kits, and then we'll have to have, um, a couple of folks here trained, which isn't a significant training, it's a real brief video, to swab and log results.
Well, I know, I noticed in their document that they recommend, uh, weekly testing. But there, I'm assuming they leave that up to individual school districts?
Correct. It's not a requirement. I just, you know, I've wrestled with this and I feel that it's the best way we can protect school, which i- is my concern in this whole thing. It's making sure that students' education isn't disrupted.
Uh, Michelle, my question was, is every athlete will be tested weekly, or will it be random? Or how will you, do you have an idea of how that will work?
My plan is for every athlete. Uh, I'm assuming that the county can provide sufficient test kits for that. They, they have made that commitment verbally. I just, um, I want to cycle back and make sure that they have numbers and they understand, and I know how, how it will work for us to obtain those kits.
And Michelle, would you, would you also mind, um, in regards to spectators? Can you clarify, in case anybody's listening? Can you clarify what the, what the approach will be in regards to, um, live streaming events and, um, spectators?
Most definitely. The OHSL, which is the league that we're part of, made the decision, um, a- and as far as I'm concerned, that's what I would have recommended, even if they had not, that we not have spectators. The responsibility of bringing spectators into the building, the tracking, the screening, um, and just the exposure of more people to the building, the students, the staff, uh, is just something that I, I don't think is prudent at this time. So the OHSL did make a determination that no schools would allow spectators, so that we're sort of on an even playing field. We aren't, um, not allowing spectators here and then going over to another district full of spectators. So, we are going to livestream all of the games. I know that, think, we will have to talk a little bit about modified, making sure that we have a good plan for pickup and drop-off, um, because obviously those are students that wouldn't necessarily be able to drive. Uh, but I, I made the decision that we'll cross the modified bridge, if you will, once we've crossed the JV and varsity bridge. So more to come on that.
Is that something that's turned around quickly? And is that being done directly by us and someone's trained to do that the right way?
Mike, I missed the first part of your question. I'm so sorry.
Just with the testing, it, it's, who's, who, we're, we're doing that ourselves. Is it turned around quickly and how effective is it?
Thanks for that. So, um, it's, it's the rapid testing, so it's pretty quick. Rapid testing is pretty accurate if you're positive. You can get a false negative, but it's probably the best. I mean, there, there isn't any other way to, to, to do this and actually have kids participate. If we did a PCR test, you're looking at multiple days before results come back. So I think, um, you know, rapid tests are appropriate for asymptomatic individuals. Certainly if someone has symptoms, they'll be screened out anyway, and they would be required to go get tested, just like a student that we send home from school. And they, they would need to have, um, you know, better than a rapid test, the PCR test, if they're symptomatic.
Michelle, can you also clarify what the procedure will look like at the end of the school day when the kids are going to their sports? And say if it's Monday is the day that they get their weekly screening, how do we, they've obviously been in, this happens like at the end of the school day when they've been in school all day, right? And then they're tested prior to going to their, their athletic, you know, practice or game or whatever the situation is?
Yeah, it'll be similar to what we did in the fall. So, your son, Janine, probably went through screening. Um, it'll, we'll use that screening setup where the kids know where screening takes place. They funnel into the screening area. Well, we'll have to have two screening areas, but we'll probably only set up one testing site. And the reason we'll have two screening areas is that some sports will practice at DMS. So wrestling practices at DMS in the gym down here. So they'll, they'll have a screening area set up. It'll be the same person that did screening in the fall, so they're very familiar with that process. Testing, I will funnel all through the high school prior to students reporting to practice, uh, so that we can weed anyone out before we get underway. And the testing would be handled by our athletic trainer and Mike free assisting. And probably initially, I will put an administrator, we'll just rotate that duty, because you have to log each one of the test negative, even if they're negative. That's sort of like the accountability for receiving the test kit. You have to log that you used it and what the result was. So I will probably have someone assist with that until we get the hang of it. I would hate for there to be a mistake made and confusion with, you know, numbers or any of that. So that's how I see it.
Will it have, will it have to, sorry, um, change the practice schedules? Like, so I assume if, say we pick a Monday, that all testing is done on Monday, any contests that are held on Monday, those student athletes would have to go first, so they, I mean, I, I guess, say you have a game on Monday and you have a team coming at 3 o'clock, how do we make sure that our testing is complete, the, the results are recorded? And will it alter our start times for, for competitions or practices to get this process complete safely?
Actually, we schedule testing for Mondays because we have no Monday contests. So Mike will have to be cognizant of that if we have a disruption in schedule, because likely there will be a disruption in schedule at some point.
Right.
Not to schedule on Mondays or to alter our testing schedule, but hopefully the former, like, don't schedule contests on Monday so that we can do our testing process.
Right.
Well, testing would occur on Monday, but screening every day?
Correct. Even though kids are screened in the morning, they'll be screened again before practice because we do have students that get symptoms later in the day, as you could imagine. You know, sometimes when you're sick, it doesn't time out nicely, that you get them when you're home tucked safe into bed. So, um, we will double screen all athletes and then obviously testing on Monday. I am not envisioning that it'll impact practice schedules too much, um, because I think we'll, we, you can get through it very quickly. I mean, we can, if we just have them show up ahead of the practice and have that as part of the plan, uh, you, you can swab pretty quickly. I mean, seconds for each person.
Do we know how many student athletes participate in winter sports collectively?
I, I think Mike is on this call. Mike, do you have a number off the top of your head?
That doesn't sound like Mike.
Mike, there's something seriously wrong with your audio, so, um, you sound like a chipmunk.
Maybe you can type the answer.
Yeah, maybe you could type in the chat if you know the number. I don't know, do you know? So Lauren Callister's been working on this with Mike and she's here with me. She said that family ID closed last night at midnight, so they probably didn't look at it yet this morning, but maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
Michelle, obviously you and the school have done a great job with protocol and keeping all the kids safe and healthy, and the numbers have been very low. Do you foresee any issues moving forward with sports personally? And are there any areas that you think need more focus or, or something like that? Like the transportation, anything like that?
Um, I, I, you know, I'll start out by saying I'm shocked that we're having this conversation. I, I thank God I didn't put any money on it because I'd be losing. I, I just didn't think that this would ever be approved, just not because of the numbers in schools, but because of the numbers surrounding schools. As I contemplated, you know, recommending or not recommending this to you all, I think that I did the similar research, I did similar research to what I had done in the fall, because I was a little shocked then as well. And the, the reality is that kids are currently participating in the sports that we're offering. Yes, they're not doing it through us, they're doing it on the outside. And while there are cases coming out of athletic-type things, it's, it doesn't seem to be creating super-spreading events, and I haven't heard of many cases. And so for me, if I'm going to say, I don't think we should do this, I was going through in my mind, you know, what are the things I'm concerned about? One, I'm concerned about spectators. So if we can take that off the plate, I feel like the kid part is manageable. I think they've done a good job with school, and I think if we put protocols in place that they need to follow in their sports, they're serious enough about participating, that they will follow those protocols. Um, I'm, I'm confident because we had a, a pretty good fall season, that maybe this will work. You know, I, I remain conflicted, as I always will, that we have such restrictions during the school day. Some of those restrictions, I feel, should be lessened. You know, I'm quarantining a lot of people and I don't feel that I'm keeping people safer because it's not spreading at school anyway. Um, I would love to see kids back, you know, five days a week with masks and feel like we could probably still keep people safe. Um, you know, so there's a lot of things that I'm in conflict, but I don't have a great reason. I don't have anything where I say, geez, you know, there've been basketball tournaments and there've been wrestling tournaments and they're super-spreaders, and this is going to be very dangerous and a disaster. If I had that data, I, you know, I would be more than happy to share it, and even though I would probably have a lot of people throwing rotten food at me, um, you know, I'm, I'm in this job to keep kids safe and, you know, I have to take that seriously, whether I'm popular or not popular. I just don't have any reason, um, that, that I could hang my hat on to not give it a try. Mike, I hope that answered all of your questions.
No, it did. I, I just, and, and I've been doing the High School Show all the way through, and every student that I've had on and every single coach, um, granted I don't have parents on and I don't have, uh, health officials, et cetera, on the show, but all have expressed their opinions of moving forward with sports and, you know, how the kids need it and that kind of stuff. So I've just, I've heard, I haven't heard anything negative. I just keep hearing, you know, that they're excited, they want to get things rolling and they believe that their protocols will be, you know, keep the student athletes safe. I just wanted to know if there was anything in particular that you had, that you said, you know, maybe we need to focus a little bit harder here or do this a little more or, um, just anything like that. So I'm, I'm, I've obviously seen what the school has done, and I believe that carries over into sports. We're in a good position.
Mike, I will say that we, we've had a lot of, um, sort of back and forth about wrestling. I think if you're going to be shocked by something, probably initiating wrestling would be your point of shock.
Right.
And we talked a lot about mask-wearing, and, you know, with masks being required, wrestling poses some unique challenges. So Mike and Lauren and I have had some significant discussion about options. There's an option where the, uh, folks can purchase, it's like a plastic mesh mask that attaches to the headgear, and you can then put a disposable mask behind it, you know, between your face and the plastic mesh. So, um, it's my goal that we, um, get some of those and ask the families to purchase them, obviously because it'll be like a personal piece of equipment for the, the child. It's not something that we're going to keep. And that will help them keep masks on their face. If you can imagine wrestling with a mask on, not only will it be nearly impossible to keep it on your face unless there's a better solution, uh, the other issue is that it almost can become like a choke hazard, you know, getting around someone's neck. And, um, it also can become a situation where a wrestler needs to, uh, needs to have a moment, and if their mask slips down, it, it can be used, I guess, within the context of competition. I hate to, I hate to color it that way, that someone would use it as a, as an out, but it, it will be used as an out most likely. So I think that's something we're spending some additional focus on, um, and I think that'll be a way for us to protect our athletes on the mask side and also make competition run as smoothly as possible.
And how quickly will we be able to get our hands on those types of things? Because if, if practice is starting, I assume we want them to wear them during practices as well.
Probably, I, I'm hoping soon, you know, like I said, this, as you can imagine, getting the surprises that we've had with all of this and the timeline being extremely compressed. Um, I'm not sure if Mike has a date yet, and if, if our friend Alvin, Simon and Theodore want to type in, into the chat, um, if you have a date, and if, if not, we'll be looking into that first thing this morning. Um, I think for the initial parts of practice, you know, we'll have to go with just regular masks and it'll be what it is, and we can at least, um, be mindful, because the, the first thing that needs to take place is some reconditioning. Um, you know, kids haven't had the same regiment that we would have here. They might be competing, but they're not doing practice and all of that, and probably not every kid is competing. So I think the reconditioning process will afford us a little bit of, um, a little bit of flexibility with time on those.
We may want to include in, in the, the piece where it's specific to wrestling that, um, you know, actual hand-to-hand or whatever does not commence until such time that those, uh, those masks are, are available. They can, they can do other drills and practice, um, that don't require actual physical contact with a, with an opponent, um, until, until we have those for kids. Michelle, two, two questions I had, um, first, I, or a comment, I guess, um, you had mentioned weekly testing of athletes. I would like to include coaches as well. I think anyone who's, is going to be part of it needs to be tested, um, not just the athletes.
They're included, Mike. I'm sorry I, I left them off, but coaches are included. What we aren't going to tackle is testing of officials, because it's just, I, I don't even know how we would do it.
Well, it, and that's, I, I think the plan ma- mentioned something about officials are responsible for themselves. And the other thing is, um, I noticed that in, in your email, uh, to the board yesterday mor- morning, I believe it was, um, you make reference to, um, the plan being approved by the school physician, Dr. Mark Kissick, but it, that's not in the plan itself. I think it's important that, that the plan includes that this plan has been approved by the school physician.
Definitely. He, you know, God bless him. He, he, um, got that document, obviously, right ahead of you and reviewed it and a- asked for some updates, which, which the team made, and then he did give his seal of approval, and we will include that. So a huge thank you to him for helping us.
And he thinks this is okay?
He approved the plan.
Okay.
Michelle, I'd like to just add that, um, I reviewed the, all the documents that you sent and the waiver that the families have to sign before their, um, child can participate, and it clearly states, um, the, the risks involved. And, um, and again, like you said in the beginning, this is a risk-benefit conversation, and I think it's a very, um, individual, um, risk-benefit conversation for every family. Everybody's experience with this pandemic has been different, based on, you know, for a variety of reasons. And so I think it's, it's critical that, you know, families understand that it really is up to them, you know, much like whether they chose hybrid or fully remote, you know, if, that we want to make sure we're creating a culture of, you know, if this isn't the right for you, for your student athlete, if this isn't right for your family, you know, that, that, that's okay, and that there's, you know, no pressure involved. So, um, because like what you stated, you know, there's no evidence that supports at this time that these are super-spreeder events. And so, but every family has to look at their situation and say whether or not it's, it's right for them. So, um, I think that's just a, a critical piece that we want to make sure that the community understands.
Just, uh, Christine going on in the chat, so I just wanted to make sure that we talk that through for the sake of the audio, if nothing else. So Mike stated that we can wear the regular mask for practice. He is waiting on a quote from the vendor, and we should be able to have those prior to the first contest. Mike Bristol is asking for just a picture so that he can visualize what this looks like, and we are only finding one vendor we know of that makes the masks. This is something that we're hoping we can turn around pretty quickly. Other programs, we know, I mean, everybody's required to wear a mask. We're not sure exactly what they're looking at. We're making a decision based on what we think is best for our athletes. Obviously, at this point, I don't, I don't have a ton of control over what they do. Um, and so it can, it could become an issue, all the things I said. And if we can't get these, um, mask covers, I'm going to call them mask covers, you know, we may have to reevaluate. It doesn't change the fact they have to still wear masks, um, but we'll have to look at some other options.
Michelle, since there is that language in the, um, document that's, that's, um, muddies the water with, is in terms of mask-wearing, and it says, um, unless a student cannot tolerate the mask, we know that our policy is that all of our athletes will be wearing a mask, but what happens in the event that, say, a wrestler goes to a competition and the wrestler that they're supposed to compete against can't tolerate it?
So, I mean, I actually updated that language, Janine.
Okay.
Because it was in conflict with the county document, and all of the schools in the OHSL will be, the kids will be required to wear masks. We won't be in a position where we're competing against anyone where masks are not required.
Okay. And then my second question is, like, I know in soccer, the kids wore masks on the field, but when they were running, they often were down below their nose, and although, you know, you had the, it was, at least it was outdoors, so the worry factor may be slightly less than the same type of thing happening in a small gymnasium. So what is going to be, like, in that situation, if they're playing and their masks for either team are below their nose, what is, like, what is the intervention? What's the process? Will they be, will it be enforced that they're up and properly above the nose, like, for all athletes in all competitions? Will the game be stopped or the contest be stopped if that happens? Like, just, I'm just, just so parents can be, you know, feel comfortable that they know what to expect?
I, I won't know it till I live it to some degree, because I just, it's hard for me to even picture, but my assumption would be if this starts happening, the competition would be stopped so that people could adjust masks. I might be delusional, Janine, I don't know, because basketball is different than wrestling and hockey, you'd be even lucky to be able to see it through the, the helmet and the, you know, so I mean, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and paint some rosy picture. In basketball, it could be you're blowing the whistle every five seconds. But, but also, you know, somebody said to me, kids aren't as close as you think in basketball. You know, most of the time, there is some distance between them, you know, and they're only passing intermittently. So while it's not outdoors, um, and, and you're sort of having the air tainted with droplets just all over the place, um, I think we're going to do our very best to make sure that masks are worn, they stay on and they fit properly, and we'll be reevaluating continuously. And I think basketball is going to be our biggest issue for that aspect because of the running, like you said.
I was told a couple different things. One, where the officials might not necessarily be stopping play because of that, but that the coaches or anybody concerned could call a timeout and say, hey, fix this before we get going again. So...
You're right, Mike. The officials are not going to take responsibility for mask protocols, that's on the part of the school. So the, what we really will have an opportunity to do in practices is to see how the masks that kids are bringing with them, because, you know, they're bringing their own mask. If those masks are not working in, in terms of staying up while running, we're going to have to evaluate what kind of mask holds up to this type of activity. And maybe it's the paper, you know, the disposable masks with the nose bendies, and, um, we're going to have to make sure that kids have those so that they actually stay on their face. It's, it's going to be a little bit of an experiment. The other thing I know is that there are kids participating in basketball now. I'm assuming that they're wearing masks, although that assumption may be false. So this could be something that we're going to get additional, um, intel on, or it could be we're going to find out the first week of practice.
And I'd just like to comment on one thing that, um, similar to what Christine said. You know, I, I, I'm sure each one of us on the board has kind of labored over this decision, and it's not one that any of us are making lightly. And I know that with whatever we decide collectively, some people are going to be happy and some people are going to be upset, but like Christine said, it is a very individual decision. But the one thing that also put my mind at ease is something, Michelle, that you said at a earlier board meeting, that every decision is fluid. If we proceed and we find that there is, you know, some concern, an uptick in cases of, a situation where we feel we can't keep our, our kids and staff and, um, you know, people safe, this, you know, will be reevaluated at many checkpoints. So I, I think that that, hopefully, parents can understand that, that we're, you know, doing our best to make a decision that we feel is, you know, based on evidence and for the well-being of, of kids and that we, none of these decisions were, you know, simply rubber-stamped or made lightly.
No, I think that's a good point, Janine. I haven't said those famous words, this is a very fluid situation.
Michelle, would, I'm sorry. Go, go ahead.
This could change... This could change, um, outside of our control or within our control. And, you know, I, the community has been very supportive, whether they've always liked, you know, the decisions that have been made or not. And we have people that, uh, if we go forward with sports, will not be happy. I mean, we've received some, I know you all received at least one email. You know, I received another, um, that you probably didn't receive. And, um, I think, you know, the reality is there will be people that will be unhappy. And I wish we could make all the people happy all the time, but that never happens. I think the reality is I'm, I'm trying to make the best decision so that I can make a recommendation to you. You're going to make the best decision and this could change in 48 hours or it could change in three weeks. And I hope that the support that we have from the community that we have had will continue no matter what the circumstance. This is incredibly challenging, incredibly challenging for everyone.
Michelle, what would, would there be any implications for other sports? If say a JV boys' basketball player tested positive? Would, would that have any implications for wrestling or varsity basketball?
No, it should, um, not have any, but that team, that whole team.
Right. I, I get that team, but not other teams.
Correct.
But what if it's, if the kids are in the process of getting tested, say on a Monday? And I imagine there's kind of a line that's formed and they're all together, uh, at least all kids that are practicing at that time slot in that building. So would that, if, if during that rapid testing process, one of those athletes should test positive um, and obviously be asymptomatic, that would probably shut down multiple sports.
Six feet apart while you're waiting and the amount of time that they'll be together will not be significant. It goes very, very quickly. We've, we've done testing events, obviously here, I can say with confidence that we, I mean, we had the same situation when you have 150 staff members lined up socially distanced and we can move them through in under an hour.
Michelle, I saw Mike had 69 total athletes signed up. Is that seventh grade through 12th grade? And is that for all the sports?
Nine through 12, just, uh, JV varsity, uh, women's and men's basketball. Wrestling, we don't really have JV wrestling per se, but I, I say we do because we sometimes will do exhibition matches. Um, so JV and varsity wrestling. And then we do have a combined hockey team with Syracuse City for men's and with Skinny Atlas for women's. And we do have athletes that'll be trying out for those teams.
And was there a certain number that you said you had to hit to go forward or no?
As long as we can field a team. I don't know if field a team is the right word, but I'm going with it.
Do we know if there was any, uh, fewer participants because of COVID? Like were, were some students that normally would be playing on these teams? Has there been any indication from parents that because of COVID, I'm holding my athlete back? Or is everyone who is expected to, to try, like, has there been any significant reduction in numbers?
Um, I think numbers are slightly lower, but I'm going to get back to you on that once we see how things shake out. Cause this has been very compressed. So, um, I don't, I don't have a great read on that.
Collectively, have there been more positive parents, um, contacting you or the school compared to people saying no or yes? Or how has that been?
Yes, although I think that that data, I don't know if that data really indicates anything. Uh, I have had more people reach out saying, great, thank you. We need this. But, you know, it may just be that they're more talkative than people that are unhappy. I don't know.
Well, and the time has been so short that people were even made aware that this was happening. I, I imagine that's, plays into it too.
Well, I think, I mean, my, my whole premise behind the robo calls, although it can be a little uncomfortable, certainly for you as a board, um, is that, that the stuff is out there, you know, the media is talking about this. And I feel like our families need to know the status of where we're at, you know. So they've certainly had, I mean, I think that was my third call in a week about, about athletics. So I do feel like I've done the best I could to at least let them know what was happening. By the way, there is a, there is a, um, a link in the chat. If you want to click on a picture of these masks, Mike and I will be doing, oh, there you go.
Oh. Isn't that pretty?
Mike and I will be doing a video too, so.
That'll keep the mask on.
Keep the headgear on too, probably.
All right. Does anybody else, does anybody have any other questions for Michelle or Mike?
Well, I think we could talk about mask wearing and protocol and all that stuff and go on and on and on about it. But it, it sounds like it is what it is, just like it was implemented in school and it's going to carry over to sports.
All right. So, um, when, when I opened the meeting, I read the, um, resolution that came out on the, uh, the initial agenda. I know that Michelle has amended that resolution. So I would like to read that now. Um, it's the one that's up on the screen. I was reading it off of the agenda that I printed out. So the resolution states, the Board of Education hereby authorizes superintendent to allow student participation in the following school sports beginning February 1st, 2021, subject to the development of and compliance with a preparedness plan for each sport, including men's and women's JV and varsity basketball and JV and varsity wrestling. The board also authorizes interested students to participate in men's ice hockey as part of the combined program hosted by Syracuse City School District and women's ice hockey as part of the combined program hosted by the Skinny Atlas School District. This time, um, all those in favor, please state your name and, uh, and I. Michael, I.
Janine, I.
I, Mike.
Christine, your mic is muted.
Sorry about that. Christine, I.
Opposed? Carried. Adjournment resolved. That the Board of Education special meeting be adjourned. Time is 7:40. They have a motion?
Motion, Janine?
Oops, sorry.
Mike, second?
Yep, thanks.
All those in favor? I, Michael.
Christine, I.
Mike, I.
Thank you for your time this morning, folks.
Thank you very much, everyone.